City Commission meeting for March the 11th will come to order. Roll call, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Gault?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Kahler?
Present. We don't have anyone to do our invocation tonight. So I'm just going to ask everybody up here tonight at the podium to just say what they're thankful for this week. I know we all have something to be thankful for.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Change it up a little bit?
That's fine.
Want to start with you, Commissioner Abraham?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm thankful. My daughter was sick and she's like six hours away. So that's always tough. You know, she's got her first apartment and, you know, and she had everything set and she got sick and she's better. She's a lot better now. I think the weather had something to do with it, I'm sure. So, yeah, she was a sick little girl, but she's, she's good now. So I'm definitely thankful for that.
Mr. Gault?
When you first said that, the most, I've been very thankful today for some sunshine and a great, pretty day. It's really lifted a lot of people's spirits, I think, so.
It has. City Clerk?
I could start with a list. First is my job. Does that work?
(laughing).
That's a pretty good one.
That's pretty smooth there.
Yeah. And just thankful that God's in my life and takes care of me every day and people that I'm around. I'm just very thankful to be.
Good. Commissioner Wilson?
I have had a lot of people tugging on me today about wanting information for this and information for that and it makes it to be stressful, but I just realized I'm thankful that we have that many people interested in Paducah and what's going on here and wanting our city to be successful. So I should be thankful for that instead of looking at it as, "Ah, I don't have time for this." So very thankful for that.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I'm thankful for the Reading Pals program at Lake Nabb School. It's my, it's my every Tuesday date and it's a good program.
Thankful that my 19-year-old son, who's in college 1,000 miles away, opted to spend spring break in Paducah.
Oh, that's great. That's pretty good.
And hopefully he'll get to stay maybe-
He'll be here this summer as well.
This summer. Well, I'd just like to say that I'm thankful for wonderful young people in our community like McCall that's here tonight and she's going to be doing our pledge of allegiance. And I'm glad to see young people like McCall step up and take a leadership role in Paducah and hope that she will always remain here and be one of our upstanding citizens and may be a future leader of Paducah. So, McCall, would you come up and help us with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
We do have a deletion. I believe that Commissioner Wilson is prepared to make a motion. Is this the appropriate time for that, Madam Clerk?
No, we wait till we get to it on the agenda.
Okay. We will have one deletion.
All right. We have John Hodges here tonight and he's going to make a report on Wallace Park project. Welcome, John.
A little bit taller.
The Joint Sewer Agency.
I came to you guys, I think it was in November, and gave a little bit of a detailed report on Wallace Park and where we are. I just wanted to come today and let you guys know, we did bid the major portion of the work, which is constructed in the subdivision. We opened bids, API out of Calvert City is the low bidder on the project, 3.8 million. It's a unit price contract, so it's a lot like, I think, what Rick talked about with the boat ramp. We have quantities from all different types of materials when we go out there and do it. We're gonna have, this is the real reason why I came, we're gonna have one more public meeting or informational meeting for the people that live out there to talk about the project, give them an opportunity to meet the contractor and to meet us. We had decent attendance to the one that we had in November. We had no attendance on the previous ones. I think when you dig a huge hole, put a bunch of pipes in the ground, people start to, start to show up. And we anticipate starting in April. Now, we've got loan dollars in it, KIA dollars, so they have to give us the authority to go. But I wanted you guys to know, I haven't got my venue set on my meeting. I try to always get something really close to the project site, but I, tentatively, I'm gonna try to have it on March 20th in the afternoon after everybody gets off work. So it's not all set in stone yet because I haven't been given the go-ahead that I can have it, the place that I want to have it yet, but I wanted to come and let you guys know that's what, that's where our plans are, so.
And where will that work be? All in the Wallace Park?
Yeah, yeah. What you'll see is you'll have the contractor working phases. We'll be right there at the intersection of Forest Circle and Lone Oak Road for some time. Probably the first 30 days, I'd say, we'll, we'll be right there. We've got a big structure we gotta build. And it always takes a lot longer to get going. It's like trying to push this big ball, you know, until you get it really going, you know, it's not real efficient. And then it'll be, it's not like a highway job where you tear up all of the roadway at one time, you know, we kind of work in a place and we move along. So you'll have some residents that'll be impacted for a while and then the majority of the residents won't even know we're, we're there because we're nowhere near where their house is. And as we put in the main line, after, sometime after the main line is built, we'll go in and start doing the individual yard work. So your average, I was telling the mayor before we start, the average homeowner's gonna see us in their yard physically working, maybe, you know, no more than a week, you know, have the whole, whole duration of the contract. Contract duration's 270 days, so we'll be out there for 270 days, but you may not see us on your block or your street for some time. And then, of course, like every other construction project, you're gonna have mess and debris and, and all that stuff. It's gonna be, that's, that's how it is and that's how we've told them, and I think they're prepared for that. Then, you know, I mean, you can look around at some of the work that we've done. We always try to put Humpty Dumpty back together again after we're done tearing him up. So that's what we're committed to doing. But it's gonna be a very tough project. I'm not gonna, anytime you do urban construction like that, 20-foot deep, it's not, not easy. That's just how it goes. But it's EPA mandated deal we're working on. We don't, we don't have any choice.
How did you choose that neighborhood?
Well, that neighborhood actually, from a technical standpoint, the neighborhood is part of the combined sewer system. It's at the, really the top of the hill of that area and it regulates through two regulators to go through an outfall behind Granger, Little Caesar's Pizza, that area. So the thought, we did Bridge Street last year, actually in 2012, where you actually had a section of pipe that you knew you could, that you could separate. Much, pretty much the rest of the combined sewer system, you can't separate. It's too far intertwined and there's no ditches. Name a ditch anywhere close to where we are here. There's no, there's no relief point because they were all filled up and houses are on top of them now. And so we have a relief point there at Wallace Park where this relieves anyway. Most of our relief points are either Island Creek or they're down here at the Ohio River. And so you really, this will be the last separation project of any size we do.
Where did all that water go before this? If it rained tonight, where would that water go right now?
Go that ditch, that, that ditch at Granger, behind Granger. The, what we're, what we're taking out of that is the, is the sanitary portion. But the vast majority of that water goes there right now. Yeah.
How many miles of combined sewers do we have in the city?
There's two answers to that. There's, there's the legal answer and then there's what, what did we do over the course of many years? If you go and actually look on the plat books from 1927, we have about 41 to 44 miles. But if you actually go out and look where every drainage problem was hooked into the sanitary system, we've got way more than that. In fact, if you look at the Wallace Park project, if you typically only went by what was labeled as a combined sewer, we'd be doing half the project we're doing. So what, what used to happen is the city only had one drainage system. So anytime anybody had a problem, you just piped it to that pipe. And so when we did our study, we went out and surveyed every house, went in every house that wasn't abandoned or whatever, so.
Well, you all do a great job. You did a great job with that big project in the park area, so I know when it's over-
It's gonna be a tough project. I mean, I'm, I'm always blunt, you know that. I mean, that's the deal. But it's a tough project, but, but it has the overall and that's what the board wants me to do and I agree with that. We want to pick the work. We're doing the work that has the overall and the end picture provides the better opportunity, the better situation for the residents of Paducah and McCracken County. And that's what we want to do. This job has, has the potential to give more benefit long-term to the residents there along that area that have basement backups.
Does the elevation help you?
It's not as much elevation as you think.
Really?
It's an optical illusion. Because those pipes up on Wallace Park, pipes that come down Lone Oak Road are still in that same network and you can kind of get the feeling for, yeah. We're not, we don't have near as much elevation as I'd love to have, but. That's one thing that City Paducah did. The engineering department in 1920s, they knew what they were doing. Just wish they didn't do it so well. That's when you could get in your time machine and go, "Hey, boys, let's not, just don't fill that ditch up anyway." All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham with the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for March 4th, 2014 City Commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Everyone had a chance to look at those. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Under motions, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents: Certificates of Liability Insurance, Circle P Enterprises LLC, MP Lawson Construction LLC, Wilkins Construction Company, Inc., Ray Blackensun, Inc. Agreements and Contracts: Grant Agreement with the Office of Homeland Security for Acceptance of the 2013 Homeland Security Grant Award for Police Department Handheld Radios. Hotel Development Agreement with Paducah Convention Hotel for Construction of a Hotel in Downtown Paducah. Mediation Agreement with Aquatic Renovation Systems for the Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Project. Change Order Number One with Aquatic Renovation Systems for Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Project. Communication Systems Agreement with Motorola Solutions for Handheld Radios for the Paducah Police Department. Cooperation Agreement with the United States of America Department of the Army for Rehabilitation of a Federal Flood Control Work Agreement with the Federal Materials Company LLC for 2014-2015 Concrete Ready Mix Contract. Agreement with ICA Engineering, Inc. for Professional Inspection Services for the Greenway Trail Phase Two Project. Agreement with the Professional Firefighters of Paducah Local 168 International Association Firefighters for Fiscal Year 2014 through 2017. Agreement with the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit for Fiscal Year 2014 through 2017. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for January 2014. Paducah Housing Authority Report on Examination of Financial Statements and Supplemental Data for the Year Ended March 31st, 2013. Bids for Engineering Public Works: Compost Grinding of Tree Debris and Yard Waste. Central Paving Company. Agricycle, Inc. Environmental Wood Recycling Bid Rejected.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Under municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing, providing for the, I gotta, I believe I'm out of, I have no personal action.
Okay, here, just pass this to him, he can read this one.
Sorry about that. Okay. Upon the recognition of City Manager, the Board of Commissioners, and the City of Paducah, under the order of personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. We have a, Chief Barnhill going to speak to that. Hi, Chief, we have a resignation.
We have a retirement.
Retirement.
Retirement. Yes, ma'am. Officer Mike Wentworth retired from us.
Yes.
Total of 20 years of service, several years with us and several with the County Sheriff's Department.
The only item on the personnel actions is a resignation of an officer.
Henry Collins.
Yes, resignation.
Went to Houston?
He is still with us, yeah. He's got a few more days.
Okay.
But that, he has tenured his, his resignation, moving on.
Officer-
He was delivered by packets on Friday night, so.
Yes, yes.
Good, good guy.
All right.
Hate to lose him.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application and all documents necessary to obtain a 2014-2015 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant in an amount up to $8,400 from the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for the Paducah Police Department to operate a one-year DUI enforcement program be adopted.
Seconded.
Chief.
Mayor and Commissioners, again, this is a, our annual award grant that we go for, $8,400 this year. No equipment match, no price match for the city. It's all overtime-related.
Sounds good. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances adoptions. We've already talked about these, so we'll run through them pretty quickly. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursable grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the United States Department of Justice for a Bulletproof Vess Partnership Grant Program Award. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a reimbursable grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the United States Department of Justice for a Bulletproof Vess Partnership Grant Program Award in the amount of $7,435.61 for assistance with purchasing bulletproof vests to be used by the Paducah Police Department.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Change Order Number One with Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, the Ohio River Boat Launch Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute Change Order Number One for a contract increase in the amount of $17,139.83 for the City of Paducah's Ohio River Boat Launch Project, increasing the total contract amount to $2,605,605.61.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Hey, now we got it. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Mayor, Mayor Commission, we introduced this ordinance a couple of weeks ago and during our review, further review of this to prepare the documents for the properties there, that orange triangle you see there is actually a piece of property that was believed to be owned by this property owner. When they bought the property in 2000, they believed they bought the entire tract, whereas the title work that was done, I'm sorry, I got a little technical difficulty here. I don't know why it's moved. I'm, I'm won't touch it anymore. Anyway, that rectangle to the north of the orange triangle was believed, that property owner believed to own all of the property there. And then in our research, before we could give that half of the property there, you'll see the hatched area, I believe it's labeled as E. That's the property that goes to the adjacent property owner. Well, we were intending on giving it to the people who believed to own it and we realized that the deed that's referenced there describes the rectangle without the triangle. So we've contacted the developer who is pursuing this as well as his surveyor and said, "You've got a little bit of work to do here because the property is gonna go to an unknown property owner right now." So we're doing that, we're having them do that research. This is just error in the professional representation of that property of which my staff found this week and we want to make sure that we didn't compound the error any further. So that's, that's why that's being, I guess, recommended to table or whatever is before you today.
Commissioner Wilson has the motion to table that. Commissioner Wilson, you have that motion.
I move that the ordinance introduced on February 25th, 2014, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of a Portion of Ridgewood Street Between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same Be Tabled."
Second.
How long will this, can I ask a question now?
Sure.
So how long do you expect this to take?
Well, the property owner that's believed to have owned the orange triangle that does not, we've contacted them today and then this is gonna be their option because they were working with the adjacent developer in, in the closure of this because they actually signed this plat believing that they were gonna receive property of which the developer was gonna buy back that half from them. So with these complications, I'm sure that when he bought the property, he's probably gonna go see his title attorney for that. He's probably gonna go see his surveyor for that because I'm sure that they're gonna say, "Well, I've got a deed and the surveyor found a deed and the title work that's done on the deed does not represent the property that I think I own." So I don't know what the timeframe would be on that because those are solutions that have to be, I guess, resolved outside of us and then until it's recorded in the courthouse, we can't move forward with this project.
So it wasn't anything on, on the city's part?
Absolutely not.
Okay, this was other landowners, issues with other landowners that came up?
Well, actually, actually, this is one of those undeveloped right-of-ways that I've, I've spoke about. I mean, when you look at that, we can't physically build a road in this right-of-way. This was actually annexed in '76. So it's vacant land that could be put to good use if it was taken out of the public's interest. And so going through that process, this was discovered. Basically, it's woods back there right now until somebody decided to use it, but then when you're going to start, I guess, disposing of public property, going through the process, expose this.
With the uncertainties on this thing, it's fair to say that it's tabled indefinitely till the information-
Correct.
-is ordered to move forward?
Right. Thank you, Rick. Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of a 15-foot alley from Bethel Street toward Main Street and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating thereto, relating to the same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of a portion of an alley from Bethel Street toward Main Street and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Ordinance is introduction. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Central Paving Company for compost grinding of tree debris and yard waste and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city accepts the bid of Central Paving Company for compost grinding of tree debris and yard waste in the amount of $524 per hour for the remaining portion of the 214 calendar year and with the three optional one-year term renewals and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this is a long-term contract that is usual and customary for the City of Paducah ever since it's had its grinding, or excuse me, its compost yard. You recall that I brought in some compost in, some large compost and some small compost and it had somewhat of an odor to it, but it's, it's also what we call the smell of money. The basic product for compost is the wood chips. You'll see the bulk wood chips being, being brought in around and then we have to grind it to fit through a three-inch screen. And it's that process, that is the initial process before it's mixed with the bioactivated sludge that makes the compost, so.
All right. Question. In August, we bought, this is a great job. You learn about a lot of things. I never knew what a trommel machine was, but we bought one in August for 172,000 bucks. Explain how this all works together? The compost that we're gonna go outside to get and the trommel machine we bought.
Okay. Raw, organic material is brought to us with, you know, in, in its normally brush. That's the base product. And then we take the bioactivated sludge that comes off of the treatment plant, it comes into a, I guess, a storage area and we create a winrow, a winrow of wood chips. We put the bioactivated sludge in the top and then we have this huge, I guess, tiller, you would refer to it, that mixes everything together and it, it cooks for about 35 to 40 days. Core temperature is up around 145 degrees and stays there to kill all of the, I guess, bacteria and everything that might be there. Then we move it over into a stockpile area and then it's a real coarse material. And that coarse black material I brought up here for your inspection so you could see the difference. And then we put it through this trommel screen, which is nothing more than a horizontal tube that has a fine screen that you load the processed material into the top of it and as this conveyor carries it through the screen, it's tumbling it, much like a, just a huge clothes dryer, but it's, it's falling through, the, the smaller particles are, are falling through, larger particles are separated. The smaller portion of it is much like what you would buy composted soil and, you know, like soil at Walmart. When you come and you open it up, that fine soil you get at Walmart is basically what we're producing in compost.
So the trommel machine does not actually do the grinding and all that?
No, it actually, it actually refines the material. It refines the material that's more, I would say, user-friendly or garden-friendly because you don't have wood, wood chip, some about half the size of this, you know, in your, in your garden. You've, you've got things that are real fine, it fits through a half-inch screen.
What we're doing tonight is approving the front end of the process, which is the grinding of the limbs and branches into the wood chips essentially, right?
Right.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, we don't vote on these tonight, so we'll move on to Commissioner Rhodes.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay L3 Communications Mobile Vision for the sole source purchasing of digital in-car cameras and a new server with required software installation
to be Used by the Paducah Police Department and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the Finance Director to make payments to L3 Communications Mobile Vision in the amount of $25,223 for the purchase of two digital in-car cameras, a new server, software, and installation to be used by Paducah Police Department and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents relating to same.
Second. So the OVHS system is a dinosaur.
They're a dinosaur, yes. They're, they're long gone. Mayor Commission, as you know, uh, we've transitioned everything over to a digital system over the last several years. The cars actually pull up to the police department. When they get in within range of the antennas on the side of the building, they transfer automatically, uh, without having to pull the old VHS tapes, uh, the CDs, the SIM cards, any of that stuff anymore. Uh, but what has happened over time is the server that houses all that data on the inside of the police department has, uh, it's seven years old now. It's actually two years out of warranty. So that's what we're, uh, asking to get replaced tonight, uh, is the server portion. And then in addition to that, buy two more cameras for the cars.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Acquisition of Real Property Located at 5455 Commerce Drive, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, and Assumption of the Lease Agreement with Maco Organics Corporation for the Improvement of a Public Project." This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah approves the acquisition of an undivided one-half interest in the real property located at 5455 Commerce Drive, Paducah, Kentucky, and the assumption of the lease obligations of Paducah McCracken County Industrial Development Authority under the lease agreement dated May 31st, 2013 with Maco Organics Corporation. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to execute a general warranty deed and assignment agreement to accomplish and consummate the acquisition, acquisition of the property.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Inter-local Cooperative Agreement Among the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, and GPEDC Incorporated." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to approve and enter into an interlocal corporation, cooperative agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and McCracken, and the County of McCracken, Kentucky and GPEDC Incorporated pursuant to Section 65.210 to 65.300 inclusive of the Kentucky Revised Statute as amended and, as amended. The Interlocal Act, the ordinance approves the form of the interlocal cooperative agreement presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city, which with such changes therein and shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor. Then a local cooperative agreement sets forth the common plan of construction that the City of Paducah, County of McCracken County, and GPEDC, Inc. will follow together to undertake the construction of project improvements to the building and the site situated at 5455 Commerce Drive, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky in the most cost-effective manner pursuant to the agreement and the Interlocal Act for a rental arrangement with Maco Corporation.
Second.
I guess I'd like to comment a little bit on this. It's been almost a year ago that, uh, the community celebrated the, uh, announcement that Maco, uh, was coming, uh, to town into the Commerce Park, uh, to occupy the former spec building that I believe had been idle for seven or eight years since it was actually, originally constructed. Um, so subsequent to that, uh, we are pleased to be entering into the, uh, construction phase. That building was essentially a shell, so it needs to be built out. Uh, Maco itself commissioned the design and is paying for it and the design will be, uh, brought forward and there will be a competitive bid process to procure a construction contractor. The essence of the interlocal agreement is that the city, the county, and GPEDC have come together to designate the process that will be used to administer that. Uh, GPEDC or PED, excuse me, has, uh, elected to, uh, serve as the project manager. So not too much unlike the Teletext building process. We will establish a common, uh, repository for the funds to come together and PED will manage the process of, of, uh, essentially managing the contract once it is let. To refresh your memory, both the city and the county are contributing 1.5 million dollars into the construction fund. Any construction costs exceeding that and, and there, uh, is a, uh, awareness that there will be, uh, an exceedance of that will be the responsibility of the corporation itself. In fact, I believe that, uh, Maco intends to expand upon the footprint of the building, uh, from the onset. So, um, that will be the process. We will, um, be given the opportunity to review, uh, claims before they're paid, but the city commission will not actually take action to execute the payment. It is written in the agreement that, uh, PED will furnish a financial, uh, accounting for the project once the project is completed. So I think, uh, it's a good arrangement. All the controls that we need, uh, are in there. So, uh, I'm excited, as I'm sure you all are, that we're at the point of, uh, ready to go with that and we look forward to the work being done and, and, uh, the, the company starting up operations.
Actually, Jeff, it's 1.25 million.
What did I say? 1.25 million apiece. Did I say something else? I'm sorry.
I think you said 1.5.
Okay.
1.25.
Thank you.
It's actually not the Commerce Park either. It's on Commerce Drive, but it's in the 24, I- 24 Logistics Park.
Okay.
Those people don't get.
Just to get, not to get confused.
I, I hope I didn't make more errors than the two that were caught, but, uh, I think, I think it was accurate from there.
Good job, but just to get it all correct.
All right. Did you have a report tonight, city manager?
Oh, I want to mention a couple of things. Word came out late today that the local option tax bill that would essentially, uh, put on the state ballot a constitutional amendment to approve local option sales tax passed out of House Committee today on a six to three vote and will hit the floor, uh, in the near future, uh, and then go to the other chamber and we'll see what happens, uh, from there. Uh, I think you're all aware that the, the bill that would consolidate the number of classes of cities, uh, passed the House last week, uh, essentially would change from a four or five-class system to a two-class system. Paducah and all but the first-class cities at present would fall into what's called a home rule class. And that is merely a, uh, uh, changing of the landscape, if you will, to set the stage for, uh, efforts that will take place in subsequent legislative session, sessions to, uh, do away with a lot of the distinctions that exist between, uh, the classes of cities right now. The one that stands out the most and perhaps is one of the most onerous in our opinion is the ability of, uh, what, fourth-class cities to have a restaurant tax, uh, while second-class cities such as ourselves don't have that flexibility right now. So that would be one example of something that is on the radar screen to pursue in subsequent legislative sessions. But it was believed that, um, this change was necessary to, to set the groundwork for those efforts in future sessions. Budget preparation, uh, is underway in earnest. Department directors will soon be receiving their instructions and forms for budget preparation. On the operational side of the budget, we're anticipating some growth in revenue, uh, badly needed. At best, it will help us sustain current operational levels. So, uh, there will be some decision-making at the administrative level on the allocation of, of some of the, uh, limited revenue growth. As far as the investment fund, I think as in past years, at least while I've been here, that will be the one I think that will garner the most attention and, and necessitate, I think, uh, the most, uh, intense decision-making at the city commission level. Our projections, um, are similar to past years and that our, um, needs and wants exceed what our resources are. So there'll need to be some prioritization of, of the expenditure of the investment fund dollars going forward. We will have a pre-budget workshop again, uh, in a few weeks like we do every year to give you that, uh, projection looking forward and share with you what we think some of the major decision points will need to be in the budget process. Lastly, uh, next Tuesday, we have a, uh, commission workshop scheduled and we will barbecue in the River, uh, Inc. will be making a presentation to the city commission that evening. And that's all I have.
Any commissioners' comments tonight? Anyone?
Yeah, I do. I, um, was talking to a, a gentleman today and he was asking me about the, um, the newspaper articles about the barbecue on the River, Paducah Symphony Orchestra and, um, and asked me what, what I thought about it. And, and I hadn't really chimed in on it. I was just kind of thinking it. And then this afternoon, a couple of things occurred to me. One, I had personal experience with. The other, um, the event itself is a perfect storm of goodwill. I really believe that. Um, you have agencies that depend on that event, uh, to help them throughout the year. Different agencies have different needs, but they're all significant. I don't think there's one agency down there any more significant than the other. People come and they support their agency. They go, they have their whole family going standing in one because that's their agency. And I think that's why that, uh, that event has grown so much that the city, I mean, the numbers keeps growing. However, uh, I remember back in 1996, I was, uh, director of Vision in the City of Paducah. And we had a, um, a group said, look, we want to, we want to raise money for you guys, uh, down here at the barbecue. I was like, great. So, um, so what do I need to do? It's like, no, you just, we got you. I'm like, okay. So I'm thinking, this is great. So I put on a VIP T-shirt. I'm thinking if you're going to raise money for me, I'm going to be down there. Hey, it's going over here, you know? Um, for three days, two days, uh, he had these, uh, these inflatables and these kids love these inflatables. They get in and jump around. It's charging like five bucks a kid. So it's two days. So, you know, with a street ministry, you always got, you're always cash strapped. I mean, there's things going on all the time, totally depending on donations. Well, when, when it came time to, uh, to show his support, he gave me three $50 bills. And I remember thinking to myself, this is not the only person down there doing that. So what I, what I would like to see, uh, is that a minimal, after all your bills are paid, your net, whatever that is, that the charities that's represented, which is the reason for the whole event anyway, nothing less than 20% goes to the charity. So that is a, is something that I don't think has, has happened. I think it should because it helps, it helps do exactly what the festival is supposed to do. You're going to have personalities. Anything this is, this successful, uh, you're going to have those turbulence. Uh, personalities are what they are. But let's just keep in mind of what the event is for and how many people, uh, depend on that. And the reason folks come is because of, of the catalyst of the event at the beginning. So, uh, we can work this stuff out, but it's a great event and, uh, it's going to get better.
You want me to? I mean, I, I'm hesitant to.
How would you, um, uh, how would you know that they're giving 20%? I mean, what kind of checks and balances are there?
Commissioner Abraham raises a good point. It's not something that the board and several committees haven't discussed before because you're exactly right. For instance, there, and they're, right off the top of my head, I can tell you that there are three different groups, all purchased the same amount of meat. And one gives 16,000, another gives 8,000, and another gives right in between the two numbers. And they all purchase the same amount of meat. So we know.
Right.
That there's a difference. Money's going different places. So we've had that conversation multiple times. That was one reason that the accountability form signed by the charity and also signed by the team was put into place. So you have both, both sides reporting. And another reason that they're reported publicly how much the charity is raised. But having that conversation with the accounting office and CPAs, they all say it's very difficult to require. I mean, you can require a certain amount, obviously.
Right.
But how you're ever going to ensure that without requiring audits, which are very costly and would probably deter people from participating? It, it's, you just have to have some trust-based, that, that's what we get into. Not that that's not a great idea.
No, no.
But they all say, well, you can, how are you going to do that?
Well, that's, that's, that's something that, uh, we do the best we can and we, to ensure that those agencies are, are most, first and foremost, been taken care of. But I might add though, there are other, there are other, um, uh, cookers that's cooking that totally is at the other extreme of, of, of the line where they'll give 80% to the non-for-profit and, and keep 20. There's plenty of guys, there's plenty of, of folks like that also. So, uh, but that was, that was something that I personally experienced and, um, um, as we, as the management of barbecue go through and look at what, what's going on and adjustments to be made, uh, relook at that.
Okay. House Bill 531, I believe I've got that house bill right. I think I emailed all of you all.
At the home rule?
No, no, the 911.
391. House Bill 391, I think.
391?
I believe it's 391.
Okay. Anyway, I emailed it to you, uh, to please call your state representatives and say that, you know, we, we need to support that because, uh, that puts an additional 30 cents, I think on, it was 70%. 70 cents on a dollar for cell phones and they're proposing a dollar because 80% of the 911 calls today are made from cell phones.
Right.
And fewer and fewer people have landlines in their homes. So it's only fair that the cellphone users pay the, the majority of that. And, and 911, I mean, we have trouble funding.
Absolutely.
911, it's such an important thing for our community.
When I first, um, when I first, uh, was elected back in 2000, I was on the 911 board. And that trend that started, um, the reports we'd get in meetings that, you know, more and more calls are coming from cell phones and there wasn't any revenue coming from that. And so that, and that was over 10 years ago. So, I mean, most folks now, you know, they don't have a landline, so.
It's House Bill 391. Yeah, I just looked. Yeah, thank you.
I mean, is it going to have rough sledding?
Yeah, there's, yeah, they, they need everyone to call in, KLC.
Who's against it? Any, any figure group?
Well, it's.
Yeah, there are always.
Any, any fee increase.
Alan.
It's likened to a tax.
A lot of people look at it as, it's a fee increase, but they look at it as a tax increase. But it's a user fee, actually.
And mayor, you might want to make the point that they need to call.
Right.
Not email.
Right.
Because they don't. A lot of people still think if you email that.
And I don't have that 800 number. Do you have that, Sandra?
It says, "We need to light up the message line by calling 502-564-8100 and let your legislators know you support House Bill 391 and the needed funding for the 911 reform." The, the 800 number is 800-372-7181. Yeah.
All right. Public.
Leave a message on that one and they'll give it to them.
Public comments? We have Ronald Ward here tonight. Yes. Ronald lives on Clark's River Road.
... situation that you may know a little bit about, but it's a situation affecting everybody in the City of Paducah, you know, ensuring city government. It's a spiraling electric rate over Paducah power. And there hasn't been much in the media or anything about this, but I've been doing a bunch of research. And as a result of that, we have ended up with the highest utility rates in the state of Kentucky. Okay. This is, I think, a charge here. This is, I think, a chart here with the outlying cities and what, and their kilowatt rate and what 2,000 watts and watt, kilowatts and watt. Well, that's not much usage in hot weather or cold weather, 2,000 kilowatts, I'm sure if you look at your bill. So, like Sockton, which is a municipal power plant, they own their own generating plant there downtown Sockton, like 2,000 kilowatts, that would be $100.40. Owensboro owns their own plant, 132. Going on Murray, which is a municipal utility, $150.80, they buy from TVA, which Paducah Power used to, but they went into the Prairie State deal. And you go on in Old Louisville, 172, they're on the street, they're Hopkinsville, 201, and Mayfair Electric, they're another municipal deal, 20563 total for 2,000 kilowatts. Even Jackson Purchase, which was in the news a lot about the Big River deal, when their big like 20% rate increase for 2,000 kilowatts, so that only puts them at 24286 a month. Okay? And we go on Princeton, there's only two co, power companies in Kentucky brought into Prairie State deal. Princeton and Paducah brought 7, 8.5% of it. But Paducah Power has 22,500 customers. Princeton only has like 3,000 or 4,000. So, they own them, which they borrowed a bunch of money to buy into that, and I'll explain that in a minute. And even Princeton, which has had to have a rate increase because they're into it. And they have to go, they have to buy their power now from that Prairie State, which has had all kinds of problems. It started out with a 2.9 billion cost, even if it cost over runs, over 5 billion. And they've had Unit 1 and Unit 2, they're having to still make their payments on it and buy electricity from them, but Unit 2 is like only running at 65% capacity. And their Peabody Coal owns the coal, and it's come to find out that the coal is not as good a grade as they thought, so they're having to burn more of the coal, but you tell, and it's high sulfur causing. In fact, in the, when that started, there were like 160 coal plants proposed in this country, that was the only one built. So, Peabody Coal came up with the idea, they couldn't get the financing to get all these utilities to sign on, maybe municipal, because they're up in Illinois, Kirkville, Missouri, Naperville, Illinois, Batavia, Illinois. It's in particular, they've really covered in those areas, the San Luis Postus Bag, the Chicago Tribune, and it's been in the news all the time. So, that, from Paducah, right now, if you use 2,000 kilowatts, would be $367.13. That's not including the fact that they're having, they're going to go up 5% over the first, or maybe more. So, that would put them at 385. Now, part of that is they just added that surcharge, 3.496, which they say will go for several months. But they have been misleading the city of Paducah and all the residents for, with their newsletters, and they're very tight-lipped, they don't never put out nothing, really. You have to go, you have to do all this research to find out this stuff. And that, they say even November, the new, November newsletter that comes to your bill, they say, "Well, it's under control, the situation." Now, here it is, March, they've added the surcharge, which might go for several months. In fact, there's been some independent reports going on the Prairie State situation, that the rates maybe keep going up, there'll never be a break. They keep saying, "We're going to get it under control," but they're saying they may never, it may go to 2,024. So, as you can see, that's the highest rate in the state of Kentucky.
Sir, can I ask you how you did the research to prove this?
On the Internet, all utility companies' rates are public record on the Internet, they're all filed. They're all current, they were all done over the weekend.
So, how did you calculate this?
I took the ever, monthly service charge, everybody has a monthly service charge, like a, Paducah's is 1475, most of them are in the range of 14. Then, multiply, this was an average use is 2,000 kilowatts, which that's not a whole lot of kilowatts in hot weather or cold weather, maybe in your mild months, maybe. And so, I multiplied, added the, multiplied the 2,000 watts times a kilowatt rate, then added the monthly base charge, that's where I come up with the calculations, and they are current. And then I'll finish up here. And one reason why they're having to raise the rate so much is I've done some research on their bonds, okay? Which it's, you've got to know where to look, so I've got a background in that. They, I looked on Moody's, and I think it is Finch, which rates bonds, well, basically for 2010, when they started buying bonds for that generating plant out there, which are filling articles in the Paducah paper, it basically sits vacant, that natural gas thing out there, and then buying into the Prairie State, which they formed a place called Kentucky Municipal Power Agency, issued bonds. So, this is on one of the bond rating companies. They presently have a debt, which is unheard of in municipal power industries. They have 22,500 customers. They have a debt of $30,000 per customer, which ends up to a grand total of like, oh, 675 million dollars. Nobody knows, I don't think, not, I didn't know it, I couldn't believe it, which it started in 2012, that's when the rates started going up. They're, and that's going to keep going up, too. They've got a $12 million a year debt service. They issued $370 million bonds in 2013, either Kentucky Municipal Power Agency bonds that finally formed, and they came in at 6.02 interest, which is extremely high for municipal power bonds, because municipal power is usually some of the lowest-priced bonds there is. And then, in 2010, they issued 170 million bonds, Paducah Power bonds, and then the reason why the ratings are so high, they, they started out with a real good rating, they were on A negative, which, that means their credit watch, which they did upgrade them back to regular I. But I mean, it's just public knowledge, for a problem facing everybody in Paducah is these exorbitant interest rates, and yet, y'all don't have any control over them, because I think all you do is just support the members of the Lord, don't you? Y'all do that for this scale. And unlike some states, there's no control over municipal utilities in Kentucky. So, basically, I'm just here, I'm in the process of contacting some media and some other things, so let y'all know what's going on.
We, we really appreciate you coming, and do you have any solutions?
I don't have a solution. I don't think there is a solution, other than, in Illinois, the Attorney General is suing in their behalf, but really, there is no solution, because some of the util, lots of utilities are hurt, Illinois, Ohio.
Sorry.
They have tried to sell their interest in this thing, there's no buyers. They are stuck under these like 20, I think, a 25-year long-term contract. Yeah, I mean, from what I'm reading, you know, if you collect those rates, I mean, those are just outrageous, compared to the rest of the state. I mean, I don't know a solution.
Thank, thank you.
I mean, so I just thought I'd vent mine, lean towards them.
I just want to make one comment, and I appreciate the gentleman's research, but the reason he was able to find all that is because, in fact, that is all public information that is attainable on a number of places, including Paducah Power Office, and all of, all of that activity has transpired before the Board in called-public meetings. So, without commenting on the, the rate issue, I will, if you want me to, but I think it's a credit to the fact that Paducah Power is a public utility, that all that information is out there publicly accessible and before the public. That's one of the reasons why we own our own electric utility, is so that the public has access to that information and a voice in it if they choose to.
Where all their electric is provided to the company, they already vet all the monitoring
Okay.
I'd like to know if that, if, if his statistics are really true, because I know when we're out recruiting businesses, we frequently say we have very low power rates, and that's, we use that to our advantage when we're recruiting companies to come here. So, you know, I'm not sure what your background is on that, to have that, to research that as the, as, you know, to state that, but I do know that we try to use our power rates to our advantage when we're recruiting companies.
I'll just make, make a couple more comments, if I might, and it's well that you mentioned that, I appreciate you bringing that up, that it's because of our investment in, in that big power supply that we're able to offer an industrial incentive rate, in other words, entice people to use that electricity. That'll help not only the incoming or expanding business and industry, but also all the customers of Paducah Power. Prairie States is a long-term investment. It's big business, it's volatile business. I, I'm on the Paducah Power Board, and we had a presentation yesterday by our consultant, and I think the most salient thing that came out of that, and I intend to share this with the Commission and encourage Paducah Power to share it with the whole customer base, but there was a dual trend line that showed the projected cost of, the rates for Paducah Power, if you will, over the next while, and let's set aside for now, the, call it a surcharge. The only thing I'm going to take exception to with your remarks is, I think, the suggestion that that power cost adjustment was going to go on for several months. It is in effect for a quarter, and we're in the second month of that quarter. It will be reviewed at that time, and our hope and expectation is that it will be able to go down and continue to go down subsequently. And you're also correct in that that surcharge is associated with the fact that the production plant is not yet operating at peak efficiency. It is still in what we call a shakedown phase. It is an extremely huge and complex project, and it, it takes a while for that to happen. If it is, I would, again, this, this may ring a little hollow, because it's, it's not tomorrow, it's today, but our belief is that tomorrow, if that's two years, five years, 20 years from now, our rates comparatively are going to be very favorable. Most utilities in Kentucky are in fact on TVA-based power supplies. Our trend line shows an increasing gap between ourselves and TVA going forward in our favor. If that happens, at least for the sake of the comparison, we are going to start looking pretty darn good by comparison. And again, Prairie States is a key component of that, and part of the reason for that is the fact that the coal supply is there, it's underground, there's a 30-year supply. Coal is a very significant component of the cost of coal-generated electricity. It's not going to change over that 30-year period of time. We are in a very unique situation in that regard. While I wasn't here when that decision was made, I think that was a very key component of the decision-making process, is that the ability to site a plant there brought with it a long-term coal supply and made us not only not dependent on TVA, but not dependent on the coal mines or the, the railroads for the transportation of the coal.
Well, I would just say, I have not done the, the research that obviously you have here, but I will still continue to say that when we're recruiting companies, we, we talk about our low power cost in this area is to our advantage, and I would want to make sure that we keep that message strong and say, and continue to say that. I mean, if that's the, the truth, and I'm, I feel sure we have the research to show that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meetings adjourned.